So I think recording, so it is it is two o'clock PM or close enough. I am calling this meeting of the Cambria Community Services District Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Committee to order. We have a quorum, all directors are present. We have, that's right, I guess, well, if you're on Zoom, you can see who's here, yeah, we're in. And on Zoom, we have, let's see, Green Space, we've got Corinne, we've got Kitty Connolly, and we have Jim. Who's?
Maybe Jim Green?
Oh, of course, probably Jim Green.
Jim Green? Hey, good afternoon, yes.
Jim is talking. So who's? So Jim, is that Jim Green or? It shows that he's talking, but we're not getting it. Anyway, we'll find out, or we won't, but in any case, Jim is on Zoom. So moving on, okay. Let's see, just chair report briefly, the September nineteen board meeting. The board approved the agreement for consulting services with Spawn Ranch for for the plans and specs for the Cambria Skate Park. Woo-hoo. A partnership with SlowCog, the San Luis Obispo County Council of Governments, which is the, you know, representatives from the seven cities and a representative at large from the county for eight fast EV chargers in the Vets Hall parking lot, right out here, you know, where Connie likes to park her blue, is that a Pontiac? Anyway, right out there. An amendment to lease agreement with Linvestments. So, all right, just a reminder that, yes, admin is moving to the twenty-one fifty Main Street Building end of this month and already kind of, you're halfway there, right? At least.
Moved most of my stuff over there, Bailey's stuff is over there, Denise and other admin staff are working on all the shredding and moving up boxes. But we will all be over there by the first.
Official dates on the first.
And David's gonna help us out with some of the repainting and cleaning up, make sure we return it back to its pristine condition.
Awesome. Just, you know, really excited, you know, I'm sure David will share, but welcome to Eduardo Alvarez, new facilities and maintenance technician. So there's one, that's awesome. Ed- Eduardo's a local, I'm excited about that, look forward to meeting him. So he started last Monday, and I'm sure he's full speed already, right?
Yeah, I guess.
At the October ten board meeting, just last Thursday, the board approved contract with Alpha Electrical for the rodeo grounds booster. Booster pump, the backup generator, well, that's underway. And directed the policy committee to develop a lighting policy, right? So that's come up here several times, so we'll have opportunity to weigh in, I'm sure, as they, as they move ahead. And of course, that's going to apply just to our streetlights and CCSD facilities, but it's a step in the right direction.
I have a comment of the like.
Excellent, yeah.
When that was, when the lighting was adopted, the board voted to accept the authority from the county to do streetlights. And put a condition that they were gonna drop it after five years. Send it back to the county. Just an interesting comment, it was a long time ago.
Do you know what year that was?
Punky Blue was on the board? That was a long time ago, yeah, so anyway. A bit of history and your point previously has, Mr. Berger, has been that we should hand that back to the county. Something you said previously. But that's, I do recall you.
It's not an option?
You, you, I do recall you saying that, I don't know, but I'm just acknowledging that, yeah.
Okay.
You made that position known and want to make sure Matt had heard that. Agenda review, I have no changes, anybody? That's what I thought. Ad hoc committees. Over the last year, we've created three ad hoc committees. The East Branch Community Park Phase Three Plan Ad Hoc Committee is on the agenda. The signage ad hoc committee, at Shannon's recommendation, we disbanded that at the last meeting. The Open Space Management Plan Ad Hoc Committee that we formed January thirty first of this year, I've discussed with Jeff. I proposed that we disband the ad hoc committee. The, you know, the inventory of open spaces owned by CCSD is is already on the list of pros committee goals. The subsequent to forming this ad hoc committee, I was successful in working with the board to add an objective to the strategic plan that reads, develop a management plan for CCSD owned on developed parcels. So that's on the, that's on the district strategic plan. So, and the pros committee is on the list of groups to involve, so Jeff is the go-to person for that, you know, contact. So, given, given that, it doesn't really make sense to continue it as an ad hoc committee of the pros committee. It's already, you know, in the the board purview. And, you know, Jeff was the individual assigned at that ad hoc committee, and with the new bylaws, an ad hoc committee clearly requires two individuals, so, yeah, makes sense, Jeff?
Yep.
All right. So that's, that's the ad hoc committees, so. Moving to committee member communications, does anyone have, any, on the committee, anything to share? Yes.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if this is the right spot, Michael, but you talk about this and the reason and stuff, so I'm not sure if there's any, any other spot in the agenda to bring it up. However, throwing this out, I guess, to FFRP others in the community about, based on that, the child that fell overboard. And I've noticed this a long time, imagine all you have as well, the many paths that go off the boardwalk, particularly on the bluff trail. And for a number of different reasons, safety, just keeping people on the boardwalk so they don't, you know, veer off and negatively impact the habitat, cause a safety problem. That there could be more signage along that bluff trail, particularly in places where there's clearly paths that go off stream that maybe it's a joint deal somehow, some way between FFRP and us or whatever, but feels to me that, that there can be a better job on the bluff trail, signage to keep people on the boardwalk.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, that was the October, Sunday, October sixth, child fell off the the bluff and, yeah. Matt, you want to, what else do we know?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot of details on the injuries that were sustained and all of that, there's separate rules, but I do know that father and the child were both went over it. Child suffered.
Went over me, oh.
I, I think they were both needing to be pulled up from, from the side, from what I understand. And then the nine-year-old was airlifted, I think by CHPH seventy with minor injuries, but that's all I have as far, as far as an update.
Thanks. So that will, for future agenda, thank you, yeah, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? Then do, okay. And for those on on Zoom, you know, where you see us swatting around our faces occasionally, there is, there, there is a, there is a fly on the attack here in Vets Hall Dining Room, and we are waving at it, I've been trying to catch that bugger for about forty minutes. No avail, but I'll keep trying. So let's see, so here it is, two oh nine, let's move to reports from affiliated community groups. We have, let's see, and also just FYI, we've had Eric Johnson join us on Zoom. Welcome, welcome, Eric. Let's see, first up, I beautify Cambria Parks and Rec, I don't see either of them here. Forest Committee, I don't see the Schwartz's. Shelley Becker, I don't see Shelley on Zoom, but we do have Green Space, so let's.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Let's hear from you, Corinne.
Okay, cool, let's see, Green Space is busy as usual.
We were unable to hear, Matt, we were unable to hear Jim, and he was trying to.
Hear us, see here.
Yeah. So Kitty's hand is up, and Kitty, what do you know?
I know that your owl is not working. Yeah, and all we can see is you, and the only speaker is through your laptop. The only microphone is also through your laptop.
Well, okay, I hear you now, awesome, thank you so much, Kitty, and and Matt, so.
The actual owl is still not working.
The owl's not.
We have a good view of you, Michael.
We just are looking at you.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry about that.
Why did Haley leave so early?
Yeah, she had work to do, but yeah. You want to give her a shout, Mr. McElhenney?
Can you hear me, Michael?
I can.
Okay, do you want me to do a report or you want me to wait?
Yeah, go ahead with the report while our general manager tries to sort out the details.
Okay, so let's see, we had a great event Saturday at the Creekside Reserve. We had the temple open with a lot of, God, it was great. Lot of people came through the temple, a lot of people that had never been in there before, we had a little treasure market art fair. Collaborating with the Harvest Festival at the Historical Society. And next weekend on the twentieth, we have a really cool speaker in our speaker series, Obie Kaufman. He's an author and a naturalist and an ecologist, he calls himself an eco philosopher. It's gonna be at Saint Paul's at five o'clock, and he's gonna do a really interesting presentation from some of his writings about California, and I encourage everyone to come, it's on our website, it's on our Facebook page, it's a ten dollar donation. We just ended our fiscal year, so we're crunching numbers and looking good. Working on our master plan for Strawberry Canyon. And, yeah, that's about the green space news, just encourage everyone to come to the speaker series, I think it's gonna be a really, really interesting talk.
Yeah, it's so, you know, disappointing, I'm gonna miss this one, you know, I will be in New York visiting families, so. So does your fiscal year end September thirty?
It does.
Gotcha, okay. Questions for Corinne? Friendly, public on Zoom, okay, thank you very much. I don't see, you'd say Dell, I don't see Suzanne Fiedler. But, you know, by the way, Lampton Cliffs, you, I'm sure you've seen it on Cambria CA, but a week from today is their first ice plant pull at Lampton Cliffs, so, you know, you'll never get a better workout than than pulling the ice plant. And a good time we had by all, and I I hear rumor about these. I think that's it, no one from the Slow Land Conservancy. So here it is, two thirteen, public comment, not on the agenda, Mr. Clark.
What about Kenny?
And, yeah, and I'm, right, well, I'm going to in the room here first. Okay, and anyone on on Zoom, we have Corinne, Jim, Kitty, and Eric. All right. For once, one twice, then that brings us to Dave Biggiri and Sludges and Manager's Report.
So with onboarding of Eduardo, his nickname is Lalo, that's what we call him, that's his name, he likes to go by. He started here on Monday, so now he took over the eight thirty to six o'clock shift. So now we have somebody closing the bathrooms besides myself, so it made a big difference on that aspect of where we can get other things taken care of once he comes in after eight thirty time schedule. We've been out doing, cleaning up the homeless encampments, we ended up doing three different locations, four locations overall, hauled out quite a bit. We ended up dropping a lot of the areas, cleaned them all up, put debris and stuff of that nature in the locations of it. There was one on the east side of the highway one that was on the Viscely Ranch where there's an individual that's been living, we kind of got them out of there, and now we cleared up the whole area, lifted everything up about ten feet off and create that tree. So now it's all wide open, they're gonna be doing a little more remediation there this week. We did also clean over there at the Cambria Pines stairs. If anybody knows there on, what's that, Rodeo Grounds Road, so you pulled in by the stop sign. I was heading home, seven thirty at night, lady came running down there, almost hit her. So I took it upon myself, I turned around and cleared it all out. There's a bigger, you can see the steps now, you can see as you come down the rodeo grounds, you can see the stairs, you can see people coming down now. We are anticipating cleaning up that road as we get further into this week and next week, because I know we've lost roughly about six feet of that road from the overhang and the trees and debris. Viscely, I know with the volunteer group, we turned around and hauled out basically the last trailer of mustard and different things that were out there. So we're gearing up to help out with the lamp and put the ice plant, once that dries out, we're gonna go ahead and contribute a little bit of effort on that one there too. As for the individual that ended up falling, the nine-year-old, I've seen the picture, we're doing pretty good. I did go out there on Sunday, was out there for about four and a half hours at Viscely Ranch, walking the trails. Turned around, I know Kitty's probably gonna put some comment on it, but the boardwalk is a big hit right now. We did a more or less a soft opening of that on Friday, which turned out really nice with the FFRP crew. After walking the bluff trail, there is roughly about fourteen spots, I know it's, I counted, I know definitely brought it already. The fourteen areas that I'm more or less concerned about where the trails drop off of that. There is some places where the underwash is taken out, trails on top, the underwash goes in by a foot, and we're walking across the top of it. And, yeah, I have not done a hundred percent investigating of everything on there, but I know since this has been a big issue, like I said, I went out there, took some pictures and did it on my own time, figure out, and I know Kitty and I were anticipating meeting yesterday, which I know, due to the holidays and stuff, I was out of commission completely, so I'm planning to do something either this week or next week, we turn around and address that. We ended up cleaning out at Windsor, the washout right there on the south end of the ranch, there's a couple handicap spots. You know, it was about a week, week and a half ago, Oscar and I went out there with the dingo, we turned around and stripped it all out, so it's all opened up in there. So we got a big. Let's see. We're just gearing up for the winter, that's the main thing, looking at a couple of different things, a couple of trees that are dead. And then there's a couple of grants that turned around, some paperwork that came through that they're getting ready to process for the power council and stuff of that nature, the undergrowth stuff. No, we're still busy, we're still running, so, and we just had the last interviews today, or our first set of interviews for the third maintenance set, we actually went through four individuals, and there's two solid that we're gonna be addressing to the GM, to turn around and have conversation with. And then, yeah, they're all local except for one individual, and I'll be honest with you, he didn't make the top four, well, I was sorry, it's top two, so where we're at right now, so, but the other three individuals that were on that list are from here in Cambria. So that's, that's a big thing that I have been pushing a lot of locals, there's a lot more pride in being part of the community.
Fantastic, thank you. Questions for, yeah, Matt, you have, yeah.
Only on our IT side, so the owl camera is not picking up anything, it's just your laptop that's getting your face. Haley says we'll need to reset, restart the meeting if you would like to get the owl up and running.
Well, on Zoom, we have Corinne and Kitty, and either of you raise your hands if, you know, you know, you get tired of looking at my sorry mug, but it doesn't sound like it's.
As long as you're okay with it, yeah.
Yeah, right. Thank you for that.
That's great about Lalo.
Good question for David, David, did you say the new guy's shift is from eight thirty in the morning till six o'clock at night?
Yes, correct.
How did that work?
How does that work?
Is that a twelve?
It's the whole ten, ten-hour deal?
Four days.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so that's how that works.
And he eats a half an hour lunch?
Half an hour or two, they got two fifteen-minute breaks, so I.
They can put them together.
If they prefer, correct, and it works out really well with that. And by training him in the whole thing with the restrooms, we do have it down to a minimal time span. It's worked out great, the way that I trained him and he's actually picked up on it, it's, it's, it's hardly anything. But it is, it's still productivity that we still need to look into with the new bathrooms that are coming in.
So he'll work Tuesday through Friday, is that?
Yeah, his SDOs are on Mondays, so when he's not here on those Mondays, I'll pick up the slack on there. I'll be here until six o'clock on Mondays, every other Monday.
Gotcha, fantastic. Other questions for David? I wanted to follow up, so you cleared by the stairs up to Cambria Pines Lodge, I mean, that's the best, one of the best stair climbs around. So you, you cleared the lower area so that it's more visible, is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct, I have several pictures of it if you like.
Yeah, no, it's great, and I just want to emphasize, you know, that, you know, David mentioned that, you know, you and Oscar cleared by the South Windsor entrance. Months ago, I had asked Public Works to, if you raid the parking area there, and they did that, and the guy from Public Works just talked about, he said, yeah, look, you know, the drainage, basically where the handicap spot was, was built up, and essentially that was damming the area. So what the, the crew did was, was clear that so that at the left end of that, there's a nice channel flowing down, so that, that's, that was perfect.
I know.
A little correction, so we do five nines one week and four nines the next, so they're not working tens. Just clear that up, I don't want the uni yelling.
That feels like ten. On paper.
So it's like, on a two-week period, it's nine nines.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Well, it's eight nines and an eight.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, 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 really, okay.
Yeah, and then the lodge stairs, again, thank you for doing that, because that intersection is really, really, really bad.
See, that's worked, now that's.
Yeah, and it was so bad, you couldn't even see it. And at some point, I mean, I know it's not now, and there's probably not much we can do except for maybe complain, but that, that's, we're gonna have to have some sort of signage for that intersection because you come down the hill, have to stop. There's tourists coming down, the lodge steps, walking, you know, there's people all over the place, it's kind of a mess, and you have to try.
Trail is another one too, though, I'm kind of.
And crossing in front of the bridge where people are coming up is because it's so obscured, it's pretty sketchy, a little burden. It's just anybody walking burden.
You see, that's what it was before.
That's still in our.
See, there's a difference in between from what it was before. You couldn't even see through there, so when I was up there at seven o'clock, I was like, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, and people aren't very careful coming down.
It is wet, so they jump and run, cross, they don't get wet off of their, what do you call the shoes? So that's why I was like, all right, you know what, that's, yeah. Yeah, that was coming up too, so I was like, yeah.
And I'm glad you got the point, David, that's really.
All right, so that brings us to Ms. Connolly, what, you, you might want to talk about the Linkin Boardwalk, huh?
Is there a Linkin Boardwalk? Yeah, it was really wonderful that it was, we were able to open it on Friday, and it was really great that David and Lalo? Laylo, Laylo were able to be there. There were, you know, was a small group of us, maybe five or seven people who walked down the boardwalk legally the first time and removed the, removed the barriers and put on the first plaque. I understand, well, we're just really grateful for the donors who supported this project, it was entirely done with private funds, there were no public funds involved in this. One of the things that I've heard is the very first day someone rode their bike down the boardwalk, so I have ordered a no bikes on the boardwalk sign, that'll come in next week, so we'll be, so our lovely, lovely boardwalk will soon have a not-so-lovely sign on it, but those are the prices you pay. We're gonna have a dedication on Saturday, October twenty-sixth at ten AM. We're gonna have a ribbon cutting and then have a ribbon up the boardwalk, so people can all join hands at the boardwalk. We will also have a pop-up sale that day. This week, plants that have been grown under contract by the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden are arriving and will go into our nursery until they can get planted at the Thanksgiving plant, plant out. I've sent them lots of seeds and I have a little, little more collecting to do, the next crop of trees will start in December after I get back from vacation. And on the ranch, the big, I guess, big news is weeding has now transitioned into trail work with a work party coming up on, believe the nineteenth, it's the nineteenth. The very first work party of the year. So if you want to spread some wood chips or groom some trails, show up at Tipton at ten o'clock on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty, questions for Kitty? Okay. So Julie and and Matt, you may tag team on the, and others, but talk to us about the skate park.
I will do that, I'll do my best, first, I want to say thank you to David because the site looks clean, it's as good as it's gonna get until we can start moving dirt, so deeply appreciate facility out there. And of course, in support of our Scarecrow Festival, we have Shredder. And Shredder is out front, making sure that anybody going by is motivated to know that he's ready to get onto the park as soon as it gets filled. We're right now in flux in regards to trying to get some final resolution in regards to the maintenance fund, and we've had several meetings involving this, I'm really hoping that we can come to an agreement on a memorandum of understanding with the district the end of November. I think that's probably a doable goal, and of course, we're waiting right now on that grant to potentially fund from NPS. I haven't heard anything differently in regards to us doing everything that's supposed to be done with our rep. So we should be on track to have some good news to report the first part of the year. Lastly, of course, what came out of September was Aaron's Vaughn, with Spawn Ranch has been officially approved and hired to finish what documents need to get done to get the county satisfied on construction. So that kind of gives you a really good understanding, two things though to the public, and I say two things, one is skatecambria.com, the other is the district website itself. Both are very up to date and very thorough, and we continue to have questions, which we welcome, but if you go to the CCSD website and click on Pros and Parks, all the documentation through the last four and a half years is all readily posted in PDF, so depending on how much time you want to put into reading, pretty confident your questions can be answered thoroughly because there's been a lot of administration time dedicated to this project, and we thank the district for that as well. Any questions?
Oh, Shannon is armed, excellent.
Laptop, I don't want to bash your laptop.
I'll follow up.
Well done, Shannon. One down, one down, took the owl over.
The land conservation water fund, land water conservation.
LCWF.
LC, land conservation water. Just a lot of red tape and bureaucracy with that, we've continued to talk to our. Um, just a lot of red tape and bureaucracy with that. Um, we've continued to talk to our rep, updating our budget narrative, some other forms that were turned in. They're processing now, we're gonna reach out with any questions, so we're still on track there. Um, once that's complete. Um, we anticipate getting in line for funding somewhere between January and February. Um, as far as skate park maintenance, we've got a couple, at least three ad hoc committee meetings on that. Um, I talked to President Gray, the Finance Committee. When we went before last time, there's just a lot of unknowns when it comes to the skate park maintenance. There's various different skate parks of all different sizes and everybody funds it a little bit differently. Some don't track it. Uh, specifically for the skate park, they package it as, as maintenance for their entire district or their area. After our last ad hoc meeting and speaking with President Gray, I think our approach now is we're gonna go back to finance. And what we're gonna be asking the board to approve as far as an amendment for the MOU is we have. Uh, the Cam- Cambria Community Council, Mr. Clark, thank you, um, has two funds. That will contribute, um, on a, a conservative. There you go, on a conservative returns of about three percent, there's about sixty two thousand dollars in there that would generate around four thousand dollars a month for maintenance. The Lions Club is, um, agreed to another five years and had a thousand, a thousand dollars a year for five years. So that puts us at five thousand dollars. So our approach is now to go back to the Finance Committee and eventually the board. And what we're gonna do is do a five year window to reopen the MOU if that is not meeting our needs for maintenance. During that five year period, work with David closely and we'll analyze how much staff time is being spent on the restroom, maintenance of the park. We don't anticipate a lot of maintenance on a brand new skate park, but we'll start to compile all the different costs associated with skate park. We'll compare and contrast that to our annual budget of five thousand dollars a year. Um, we've talked about moving those funds from the Community Council over to the district, so the district will have those on hand and we'll invest them. Um, along with our other, you know, district monies that we invest and look at that rate of return. But I think we're in a good position to, to bring forward to finance and eventually the board, um, an amendment to that MOU that talks about. In five years, we need to sit down and read about, about where we are. And that's something that would be agreeable to skate Cambria and Community Council. And, um, our district council is in support of that because we just don't know, you know, Cambria is a unique area. It's the first time we've ever done a skate park. Our staffing is different, climate's different, so that's gonna be our approach.
Fantastic. Yeah, you're striking the right, trying to strike the right balance between doing the right thing financially, physically for, uh, the right pairs. And not holding the skate park hostage to uncertainties.
Right.
Which are unknown and unknowable at this time.
Right. And I, and I think we just need a good five years window and snapshot of how we as the CCSD are gonna maintain that skate park. Which is different than how others are maintaining their skate parks and their staffing is different. You know, maybe they have the staff time and the flexibility. Um, that it really doesn't hurt them financially, but for us, you know, as we know, we can be down two maintenance technicians, you know, in a blink of an eye, so. And then we also have the Lions Club who's volunteered their time to help maintain it themselves, like the cleaning and maintaining of the parks, so.
Fantastic. Questions on, on skate park?
Well, I just want to add in one thing in regards to the maintenance fund because. Anthony and I have been working really closely with Dick on trying to get this across the finish line for maintenance, and I just want to absolutely reiterate. That we as a group, meaning Skate Cambria, are very concerned about making sure that it's not just about building a project. That we have the responsibility of understanding, taking care of it, um, put an infrastructure into this community that has. A maintenance fund to see it through. That money that is in that account though, is privately donated. So, I, you know, we talk about the taxpayer, um, we continue to reduce any commitment other than the original one seventy eight. That was provided on behalf of the district. The rest of it has come from grant funding and private funds, so I just want to reemphasize. The care that's been taken into getting this project to go.
Also, a question came to me from, from some folks, you know, the, uh, in general, general manager of communications. That the district, uh, funded a hundred and seventy eight thousand towards the preliminary costs towards the skate park. And somehow interpreted that to mean only the, the design phase, and that's not the intent. You know, the intent was, we're in the early phases, so that's the only reason for that we're preliminary being in there. That, that, uh, a hundred and seventy eight, um, it's.
It's actually over three years, and we're right on track to do that.
But there's no limit when, um, you know, as, you know, in other words, that, that funding can be spent on. On, uh, on construction.
It can, yeah. We just didn't know considering, um, considering how long this project has been around. And the cost of things and how they've increased, we, like, oh, look at that. Um, we didn't know how far that one seventy eight would go, so some of the thought was, it probably would be mostly preliminary costs. Uh, but there might be some of that money left over that didn't go towards permitting or anything else that could be, could go towards construction. And I looked at the staff report and absolutely the money is dedicated to the skate park, park, it is not, um, you know, pigeonholed just for preliminary costs. But we talked about the preliminary phase we're in, and that's kind of where we've been, design, everything like that, so.
So I guess that brings us to the East Ranch restroom, um, you know, yeah, uh, Matt, you want to?
I can just give a tiny update and then, um, Jim, I think there are the, uh, the Jim Turner panelists. Uh, it's like Jim drop off.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I'll give as much of an update as I can. Um, we've started to coordinate with the company on, uh, getting that craned in off the truck. Still targeting January, um, there's some entrance issues, because what do you call them, David? Those. Paddle rails.
Yeah, they have the, the pipe pins.
The pipe, so that's gonna have to be pulled out, um, in order to get the truck close enough to crane it in. Um, we've looked at some of the design plans, there's, um, some of the electrical moved around a little bit with Montini's. And, and I'm just high level going over this, um, because Monty knows it way more than I do, but there were some changes to the plans. That we have gone over to county and just updated them on. It shouldn't cause for any delay, we have plenty of time before it gets here. Um, and everything seems to be on track.
And there was some conversation, Shannon, you had brought up some questions about the, um, the. The precise routing of the, you know.
The path.
Uh, the four of the pathway going to the restroom, you know, what, you know, kind of what's your, you know.
What's concerned there and what do we want to, you know?
So are the, are we, I know, I'm voice already, um. I, Jeff and you two who probably speak to this better, but obviously we're not going to be doing a pathway, at least in the beginning. Because we, that's a considerable cost which we kind of anticipated, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to move it a little closer. Um, but is that, that correct?
That's pretty much where we are. The amount of funds that we have between the restroom and we're budgeted. I mean, we were able to cover the environmental monitoring, uh, the install, you know, which is pretty expensive, the restroom itself. But our window of funds is starting to narrow pretty quickly, and we would have to go back to the board for a budget adjustment if we were to add more concrete, which is pretty expensive.
Right.
But it's not to say that we can't do that later on.
Okay.
And add on to, to.
Yeah, I mean, because obviously, uh, fundraising for concrete to lead us to a bathroom is a whole different level of fundraising, so. Um, but I figured that's something that we can tackle down the road.
Yeah, and, and it's, um, if we did something to those plans with the concrete potential, it could move us in the permitting. Um, hierarchy, you know, maybe get bumped down the planning and then have to work our way back up. I still think we have the time to do it. Um, but some of our thought was, let's just get it in and then, um, as we look at alterations to it afterwards, once the restroom's installed. That's a lot easier to get through.
Exactly, yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that. And I know you guys talked to about permitting for, uh, the components and pathways to the components. Um, and unfortunately, because I was circling Dallas, I didn't get to be in the meeting. Um, I do know that when we talked to the county planning about the disc golf originally, we had long conversations with them about this. That there was no requirement for pathways leading to at least some of these features. Um, other than possibly DG or, um, or, uh, you know, uh, wood chip type of pathway, so.
I heard that about the, um.
Disc golf for sure.
Some of the other features based on what we, playground.
Figured the playground of the bathroom would be utilize the same pathway in going two different directions. And that's probably where we're gonna get into some concrete, but the, the general idea was to minimize, and when I talked to Shani a long time ago. The general idea was to minimize the amount of concrete we poured to, for those type of pathways, so.
I'd surely be speculating after our conversation with Monty, and he works pretty closely with the county, he gave us that feeling like, mm.
But I sort of, I agree that we can tackle that down the road.
Yeah, so after the restroom's in, I'm looking at, let's just call it maybe a, um. Or three B, perhaps, that we can tackle fundraising to address the pathways overall. So whether it's concrete or whether it's DG, depending on, and that we hopefully can give some insight into that. When we get the final, pretty much our plan finalized before board approval. And we can get a little bit of insight in that meeting that Monty brought up. That would sort of give us a look see from the county and give us a bit more insight as to what we should be planning for.
It's like a, a sit down with the county.
And so we're not guessing and, and, and what is, you know, does picnic area need a pathway? If so, what would that need to look like?
Well, the group picnic area is right off the parking lot, so that was kind of the purpose of it, is to not have to do any concrete, because it's right there.
Right, but doesn't need a, uh, like a compact DG.
That's what we decided.
To enable, yeah, right, and then to the disc golf, same thing. So just understanding those nuances of what kind of, when we're talking about.
Definitely, I mean, I know, like I said, we'll have to go back to the county and have these really good discussions, but. Um, uh, Shanny definitely said that there's, there's no requirement for any pathways for disc golf, because it's going to be just. The paint, this, the, the, um, path of play, it'll create its own, like, trail.
Yeah.
Um, which is what happens, it's all over the county, that's the disc golf courses.
Yeah, I don't think it's the disc golf, I think it's the other things that are.
Yeah, I, I.
That, that will trigger potentially.
I'm hoping that we can maybe define that as phase four, because that's going to be, um, right now, we're focused on components. And phase four is going to be an overall, um, uh, aesthetic. And, um, connection for the whole park, because we have to do trees, I mean, there's a lot more that we want to do. Um, but for fundraising purposes, if we chunk this out the way we are, it's kind of our goal.
Well, I did about interrupt the flow of the conversation, but we're, we're already knee deep into the community park phase three discussion.
Yeah.
Like, so I guess we're done discussing the restroom.
News ranch.
Uh, so let's, uh, let's, let's, uh, yeah, so that's, that's excellent. Um, so the consent agenda, um, so a- again, this is a two step process. You know, I don't want to hear a motion until I've asked the first question. Um, thank you, but are there any changes needed? And not surprising, then, uh, then let's, uh, let's entertain a motion. To, uh, to approve the, uh, on the consent agenda.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, alright, and so Shannon, uh, has moved and Julie has divided the second. That we approved the minutes from the regular meeting held on September seventeen, um, all in favor?
I, hi.
Your names?
Hi.
Alright, uh, yeah, so we have unanimous consent on the, uh, consent agenda. All in favor, so let's move to regular business. And, um, update on the draft community park phase three plan engagement sections. At the last meeting, just a brief introduction, at the last meeting, we, um, we presented, uh, page three plan to the board committee. Had on the wall, a chart, we had, uh, kind of laid out some engagement. Um, I did want to share that, uh, at the table over here, anyone's wondering why this is here. Um, I've been at the, uh, I've been at the farmer's market for a couple of weeks. And so these, uh, these fit, you know, thank you, Shannon, I've got these on foam boards and fabulous display. Of, uh, with the map and the, um. And these, that's graphics, you buy, you know, I should, you know, I, I ran a couple of forebys through the, the table saw. And, uh, so, so you've got, you said it, and because at the farmer's market, it doesn't take much wind. So these, whoever set the farmer's market this Friday, um, feel free to take this with you. Um, and, uh, probably the, you know, it would be wise to, uh, to anchor this down, so, um, so. It's not gonna blow this away. Uh, it kind of helps to have it anchored down, um, and, um, otherwise, you know, we, we've been saying. Yeah, we had, had these sitting here and they're blowing away in the wind, so, so this will be a little more professional and, um, so whoever's up. Uh, I guess, Jeff, you're up tomorrow on some things, so.
Yeah, so are we.
Take whatever you need and, and Shannon, figure out what the path is. I'll be, I'll be gone the next two weeks. Um, so, you know, whoever's lined up for the farmer's market in the next couple of weeks, feel free to take this with you. And if you brought the wrong car, I'm happy to, uh, to drop them off, so. And, uh, and, uh, and by the way, right, uh, the QR code, I mean, you can't miss this thing. So, um, I guess that's all I wanted to say, uh, say, and, uh, so should it? So thi- this item is on the engagement session, right?
Yes.
So if, if I, on the farmer's market piece of this, um, we, the plan is that we would, what, go. Through Thanksgiving Friday or the Friday before Thanksgiving.
There's no plan, just whatever farmer's market is, we can do.
Okay, so to that point, then, if we don't have some kind of a schedule, some way of people committing. It's gonna be kind of hit or miss, so I'm only throwing this out as an idea, is that we look at the Friday calendars. And make some commitments. I can do this Friday, but I can't do the next Friday or the Friday after that. Um, so.
We have it here on the spreadsheet, which I shared with everybody, so everyone could do their, sign up for their, um, presentations. I was gonna go through that. Um, so you have green space, which is pending, it says you.
Me tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, I wanted to put some dates here. And tomorrow's the sixteen?
There, so.
Okay, and then we have Friends of this Cleanie Ranch Preserve, which was completed.
Yep.
And so do we get any responses and feedback form from that?
I would say mostly good, very positive.
But do they do it online or in paper or both?
Um, I think, and I don't know, Kitty's still online, we handed out the paper, but have QR code on it. I know one of the board members completed it online.
Okay.
So I don't know, um, if Kitty is again, still online and you've got some of those. Um, I'm happy to come by the office, grab them, whatever.
I don't have any print versions, but I forgot to thank you for coming to present to our group. Thank you, Jeff.
No worries. And then Steve, I don't know, on the tourism board? No?
I've got some from farmer's market, so hey, yeah.
Okay, so we have Rotary Club on the twenty fifth with Julie. Dog park with Shelley is still pending, I did send her everything. CYAA with Julie. Um, I guess that's still pending, we're trying to figure out the best delivery system with that. Historical Society, we don't have a date yet.
Uh, it's the twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth, okay. Alright, um, the Community Scholarship Foundation, that's me, they're super resistant to having this presentation. Which is unfortunate because they're afraid that it's something that will be voted on and that goes against their bylaws. And I've been trying to explain it to them, so I'm still working on that one. Um, Slow County Parks is pending with Steve and Jeff. Uh, NCAC ongoing, did you?
Tomorrow, on the agenda.
Okay, good.
So if anyone wants to zoom in, um, yeah, that, that discussion will happen tomorrow night.
Okay, the chamber, uh, eleven nineteen, Steve?
Yeah.
Let me see, eleven nineteen. I, yes. Okay, I can help with that one. I can do that.
Fantastic.
Um, tourism board, um, okay, and community council.
Couple of sheets from the tourism board, I think.
Okay.
Well, there are, the, the ones they, oh, okay, yeah.
Community council, Steve, you got that one?
Yeah, November, Dick.
November thirteenth.
November thirteen?
And who, is somebody doing that one?
It says you, but. I can do it, but I I'll be out of town, so.
Okay. It would be good for you to come and meet those people at that group, right, don't you think, Dick? Agree, yeah.
I, I'm waiting.
Lions Club, same name?
Yep.
Do we have a date for Lions Club?
Shannon, didn't you, did you agree to next Tuesday?
To next Tuesday for?
The Lions Club.
Oh, that's me?
The twenty second, yeah.
The twenty second on Tuesday. Um. Um, what time is it?
Six o'clock, well, the actual presentations can ha- happen during dinner because that makes it be really short. And that starts at six thirty.
Six thirty?
And you can be my guest and.
Okay. It's the twenty second, I can do your step remind me.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Um, put that down on here. The school district still pending?
Yeah, I've had a couple of conversations with our superintendent already, we're we're just. We're really trying to figure out Shannon how to get this delivered in both Spanish and English, so we want to make sure to have a different.
I just haven't had the chance to translate everything, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just talking about the presentation itself in the sense of just.
I know, I have to translate that, yeah, I've done it, yeah, it's a long work, so. Um and then we have farmer's markets still. Um we do need people, uh my daughter's getting married, so next week. And um so I can probably do farmer's market on Friday, but it's.
I can do it next week.
Anyone? Super excited about doing farmer's market?
I'll do it. Not this Friday, but the next Friday.
Okay, so we're talking Friday the eighteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do this Friday.
Okay, and I can come down and help for a little bit.
It's it's really good to have two there. Uh. Uh because it's otherwise, you have you have you have a conversation and you're kind of out of out of touch five minutes. It's really good to have two folks uh signed up each week.
And then we still have local churches, which everybody I'm hoping will do because that's a good way to reach all the different types of communities that we have going on here in town.
Um. Are you going to go kind of under church, are you gonna, you know?
I don't have a list.
Six or eight lines?
I'm hoping that people will just get on this because again, I've shared this with everybody and get on the spreadsheet, sign up for a church, they tend. I'll paint Shelley again, she was gonna help with a couple of them, so. Um, and then I just want to remind everybody that you can take the presentation I shared with all the whole package with everybody. And show your friends and have them complete the form like super easy and I already did it with a bunch of friends, so deal with my neighborhood. Like just go out there and show it to people. Um we have.
There's another, so Steve, Steve and I are doing the Odd Fellows.
Yes, yeah, when is your thing tomorrow with?
It's in that package I emailed.
There's another one you can add.
Which one?
Odd Fellows.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, apologies, what I what I have on screen is is the PDF and Shannon is updating away.
Yep.
Um we have thirty two responses so far. So we're up and running, getting the responses going. Um, I if you do it online, it goes directly to my spreadsheet and is all completed and I get like some really nice data charts to present when we're all done with it. So really the best way to do it is online. Um otherwise, I gotta enter these in manually, which I'm not excited about doing.
Yep.
Um, and I think we're doing good so far.
Uh how many, uh have you checked how many data points we have?
What do you mean, how many data points?
Uh on the survey form.
Mm-hmm, we have uh, I don't have that view on this computer.
I will say while you're looking, wh- one of the best interactions I had at the farmer's market two or three weeks ago. There was about a dozen uh school kids came by, uh high school kids, and I just started talking and they all. They all swarmed over, they were they were just so excited and they all had their phones out shooting the uh. Uh the QR code, we had this, you know, like twenty minute conversation, uh so um. You know, and they, you know, they said disc golf?
Yeah, there's about nine data points, so I mean, if you think of it as the components. And so, like I said, when I have a spreadsheet and I'm completely done with it, I can put a bunch of like.
With more responses than that, though, right?
We have third twenty eight here and four here.
Oh, that's, yeah, so thirty two, thirty two responses, yeah, that's weird, do we have a? A sense of where we like to be?
I mean, no.
No, okay.
No.
Good.
As many as possible.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, we figure, we only have about a thousand people that actually live in this town, so if we got a thousand, we'd be great.
Still, what is a maybe a compelling number for, you know? To get to the last board.
I think that's a great question. Because we do these surveys a lot and nobody fills the survey out and then.
That's why we kind of always ask like how effective really is survey, right? Because we did four hundred, like three hundred and ninety some odd surveys.
Right.
The last time when we did the ad hoc. And then here's this data and now what?
Yeah.
Well, I did uh show that we were statistically, um so the terminology. Uh as far as the percentage of people that completed the survey last time, we were had a a statistically. Good representation of the community. So I'll look at those figures again, I had to do a little bit math because again, not many people actually live in this town, so it's a little bit confusing. When you try to get our population versus how many people have actually responded and then that percentage.
Yeah.
Um and then there are some metrics on what is statistically a good representation. Um that you can go to on the census website. So um I will do that as we kind of get a little deeper into this, right now, we're still just getting going. Again, more reason to just do it with your friends, we have it on the website, which is great, so if you appoint people to the website, it has a presentation. And the form, you don't even have to say anything, you say go look at it and fill out the feedback form. I mean, they're pretty self explanatory, even if you're just looking at the form, people know what a playground in general, what a playground is. Um, you know, so you can do a pretty quick presentation and actually have them. Give their feedback.
Is there a PDF of just the QR code?
Everything in the email I sent to everybody, I put.
No, I mean, just.
Yes.
So I can just like embed like the QR code in an email, say?
Yeah.
Easy way to do it.
It's an image, I'll send it to you, I can send the whole package again, so.
No, 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 you don't need to, I got the whole package, I just couldn't remember, it's just a QR code file that I can use without all the other stuff. Explain it and they just have an easy. E- some people's, they just wanna.
Currently, there is not, but if you open that survey form that Shannon sent, which is a PDF. If you open the SNP tool.
Yeah.
You know, that little square, paste it in. That works, boom, yeah. And also, you know, Jeff will carry these phone boards out, but you know, just, you know, interact, you know, who's, you know, and. And if, you know. Y- y'all don't know who's got it, just, you know, connect in with uh with Shannon, you know, and Shannon will know and keep Shannon informed on on, you know. Where it's at, so because that's that's handy.
I'll have these through Friday and then, you know, whoever needs them next week.
Wait.
I just sent you an image of the QR.
Okay, thanks, yeah, um. Dick and I had a conversation uh weekend about. And I may be wrong on the the demos of these organizations, but are we significantly uh? Um reaching out to Hispanic community?
That's one of the reasons that we want to hit the churches, that's the best way to reach out to within the school sites. School district and the churches, those two ways are to get the families and Hispanic community.
So I, you know, I'm out of school here, Dick, tell me, but uh and I think you know this, uh Lourdes.
Mm-hmm, but Lourdes already went out, we talked about this in the last meeting.
Oh.
Lourdes already went out and hit the Hispanic community pretty hard when we were doing the whole of the golf and everything. Um and the playing fields and so we want to hit the churches, we wanted the school sites. We don't want to do what we did last time because it sends a really confusing message. She already went out and asked these questions and now she's going out and asking these questions again. And they were already upset the first time she went out because we have asked these questions so many times throughout that course of Cambria.
Okay.
So um I think this is more organic presentations that the churches and the school sites are going to hit like a broad spectrum in the community.
Yeah, Lourdes only went out in regards to the ad hoc for the community park, had nothing to do with escape.
Oh.
Nothing to do with. It was completely the.
This all in the fields really, it's okay, talking about. Yeah.
It's overwhelming interest in play fields.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Yeah.
Well, because again, I mean, this goes back, Shannon knows the numbers as well as I do, twenty years, I mean. They were promised this twenty years ago.
We've all raised money multiple times too, so it's, this is a little bit touchy because of that, because we've all raised money for this. We've all said it over and over and over again, what we want.
Right.
Um, so you, I mean, you could potentially get people who are getting kind of upset with, you know, you keep asking me, but nothing happened, that's true.
Yeah, I am not filling out this survey.
Because we've already said.
I filled out a hundred of them already, right, it's just like, alright, another survey, there's just no way. Yeah, I'm for it, right, I mean, I'm not, everyone's preaching, I'm for representative democracy, that's what we live in. I vote for leaders on a board, they make the decision, I don't need a survey of every single decision the community makes. You don't like my director's decisions, vote him off the board.
I think the only thing that we really haven't decided is a cutoff date. So I think we were talking about the end of November, but I kind of wanted to have like a a definitive cutoff date. As maybe December first.
I was I was gonna ask, you know, uh can uh. Thinking that I would love to bring this to the board on January ninth.
Right.
And to your point, Steve, what are we bringing to the board?
Data.
The phase three plan with with community input that says, here is the engagement. Here's the voice of the public, the voice of the community that we've heard. Uh and what they think about the plan uh that we've brought to them and. Until we have approval from the CCSB board on a phase three plan, we don't have a phase three plan. So the the value in getting input uh is to uh. To have a compelling set of data that says this is what the community wants, so on the next steps.
I would say to you that the feedback probably isn't important as showing our engagement.
Yeah.
Where we've gone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we're not going to get a whole lot of people who wanted.
But we've reached out.
We've reached out to all.
Everybody what's going on.
Yeah.
And so in addition to the surveys, yeah, to your point. I, we have, you know, those who've been to these engagements can talk about the the overall. Reception that we're getting, right?
Yeah, and I think uh the lack of a negative response is just as positive as a good response. We're going out, we're telling everybody and nobody has jumped up and said, I do not want this.
But you would say that without any.
Somebody hasn't, we've given the community.
So to your question about cutoff date, um if we're going to bring this to the board in January. Uh we've got to bring this to the pros committee in uh in December on the on seventeenth. So um perhaps prior to the November meeting. We aim to bring this all in is, you know, by the November pros committing meeting. So that we can pull that together and then as the ad hoc, you can make whatever tweaks needed. Uh and then we can bring that, uh does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
So um so we aim for around the first of December to have this completely buttoned up, but. Um obviously knowing that our target month is November, we hit it hard and heavy to make sure we check everything off this list. And as much as we possibly can. And again, reaching out and I I'll add to the list too, because I did a little community input with my neighborhood. And so if everyone does that too, we can add that to the list.
Have you done any social media, Nextdoor, anything like that?
I I'm yeah, I find Nextdoor and Facebook to be pretty important, so that's some, and I didn't want to like step on the district's toes, I don't know how to do that.
I mean, we can put it out if you like.
And I was hoping you'd put it in your newsletter too, which we talked about.
This Friday.
Okay.
So we'll have it out this Friday.
Okay.
Here's here's a thought, um. Is I heard the conversation among, you know, at our meeting last uh last month. The intent was, and I'm gonna stand up and wave my arms just for emphasis, that. To some extent, everyone we get input from, we want them to look at the map. We want, we want to talk about what the plans are as opposed to blindly sending a questionnaire. And without really having understanding of that context. So what I, what I'm concerned about is if we just send somebody a link and they look at that and say, oh. Yes or no, without having the conversation that we have had.
It's true, but the link is to the website where all the content is there, so you can't see the images and the presentation.
You're right.
So at least there is that, so I think it's far better to send them to the website where it have the form and the presentation and someone can look at it. Because obviously, you're just not able to speak to everybody.
Right. So did we decide December one, we have motion for that or is it just?
No, I don't think it's supposed to be a hard cutoff, we just want to make sure we have everything before that meeting in December.
Yeah.
Um but we're aiming for December first.
How about indicating somehow on when you give somebody a phone? Or if they hit your QR code to say we'd like your feedback before December?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
If we got feedback after that, I'm not going to exploit it, so.
Well, okay, but but at some point, we're going to um. Yeah, here's, yeah, you know, here they are, yeah, at some point. We're gonna gather that up, we're gonna bring it to uh the, well, the cutoff for the the Tuesday, December seventeenth meeting. Seventeen minus nine, that would be the uh, I guess, you know, the the Monday prior. So that's the point where I give the, you know, whatever we've got daily for publication, so. So, so yeah, December first ish, you know, bring everything together, yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, just to not to throw a wrench into the works, but as you mentioned before, the sort of meeting with the county. To once we've finalized phase three. And we've got something that we can run by the county powers at B that, I guess, maybe Monty can broker that meeting. But before we finalize that for the board, I think that was the timing we had talked about in that meeting, just being able to sort of. Sanitize it with this look see from the county and then, okay, everything is good, okay, but you got to factor in. You need to know this, you need to know this, you need to know this, you know. Pathways, construction permits, um you know, environmental mitigation and monitoring, blah, 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 blah. That, so when we go to board, we've we've got sort of the counties like. As best we can, the county's blessing for that and we should not then encounter construction permit. Any, hopefully, any problems.
I mean, I think in January, we would have an idea of the outlook. Um, I wouldn't say we would have county stamps.
Exactly, because we don't have designs.
Yeah.
And that's my.
Fair enough.
We have, we have a concept.
Yeah, fair enough.
Without real design.
We have some idea of what.
And a basic general location.
Yeah, yeah, but.
How many things can be tweaked?
That's that's a fair statement, that stands, we'll put an outlook like, hey, you guys are headed in the right direction or.
Right.
Beware this, blah, blah, blah.
And it should give us some idea as far as the ADA compliance and.
Right.
I think the one we can really go to them with is disc golf because we're not moving fifty cubic yards of dirt, so there's no construction permit requirements. Um, they already said there isn't, I mean, we'll talk to them, but. Um that hopefully will be a little bit of an easier one, so we can maybe start there and then get the conversation going back together.
So does it make sense that perhaps for the ad hoc committee and, you know, Matt, either you or. Or Tristan, someone from staff meeting with the with the uh county planning, uh here it is October, you could set that up. For December perhaps, just to have that that chat of what are the considerations? So that when they comes to the board. When the question comes up, right, have we got the input, we would have that conversation, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think um, you know, we we talked to Monty and he was like, you know, uh Jim at one point was thinking they want a little more solid plan set. Before you meet with them and the money is like, I think we can, Monty was saying he was having a pre meeting on on a project that was just about as far along as this one.
Yeah.
Um so if if this is what we have in terms of our our plan and we have the the map, I think we can sit down with county, it does cost a thousand bucks.
Yeah, this isn't new to the county though either, we had several, I mean, Jim and I have been down to the county. Yeah, this isn't new to the county though either, we had several, I mean, Jim and I have been down to the county, you know, this has been going on for two years.
I know, and I've had some long conversations with.
I mean, yeah, well, I mean, it's saying more in the last two years where it was reactivated to be able to say. Uh, we need some serious considerations on what these particular fourteen acres of recreation boundaries look like.
I think with this meeting and paying a thousand dollars, you're gonna get all the voices in the room. And, cause everybody's gonna have something different to say or something else to consider, so I think it's. It's lost that time.
So that's, uh, in the big picture, that's a bargain, you know, in the big picture.
How do we handle that, cause we don't have a budget. The board has to approve a thousand.
I'll look, I'll look in the, um. F and R slash parks record space budget, see where we have Monday's budget for this year.
Okay.
It's a broad term, broad category, there might be some monies there that we can attribute this to. Um, otherwise it'd be, you know, resting budget adjustment, a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, we can find that.
Okay, any other questions on engagement?
So I, I, how do we, on that, how does that? How, how does that happen? You guys got that in your sights? This, this, you know.
The county meeting?
Yeah, the county.
Okay.
I think, can I meet on the ad hoc with Matt?
You can set it up, yeah.
Fantastic, thanks.
Yep.
What else on the engagement, and I think that was the, the total objective of this discussion was.
Well, I, I really gotta lean in on the translation part, because we have a school district now that's at eighty-two percent. And so the ability to go and connect with the school district. I can't do it without having it translated.
Yeah, but I keep saying I'm definitely translating it, I just haven't had the bandwidth, cause I traveled all last week.
No, no, no.
So it will be all translated. And we can post it on the website even, translated, so.
Timeline on that.
Just give me a day or two.
Okay, can ChatGPT do it?
I have access, I have access to a, a third party translation company. Who can do it for me, and then, so it'll be an AI translation with a human look at it. Um, so that's gonna be the fastest way I can get it done, um, I can just pay for it through work. Um, but again, I just gotta like tackle, cause it's, there's design, the way you submit for translation, I have to submit a certain, um. Like, you know, uh, certain raw copy for them to translate, so. It just takes some work on the front end for me to set it all up.
I just don't, I mean, it's, it's the students and the students are gonna wanna, and the parents of the students will certainly play a great role in data, so.
Yeah, if you, you do get into a, a dead end, you know, back in the campaigning days, I remember taking whatever I had. Blur, I blur, I had put it into a translation company, and this is, you know. Uh, I sent it off and, you know, somebody translated it, um. Like, three days later, I paid a nominal fee, a hundred dollars.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, and, and then it comes back, and then I, I remember vetting it with, with Carlos and a few folks, maybe my, you know, like, we'll just. Book that with a few friends, and. Yeah.
Yeah, and then I'll work with Neilie and Matt to get it up on the website, just right next to the English stuff, so I'll be there essentially located.
Alright, um, that brings us to six B update, I discuss an update, the pros goals progress report. And I know last month we got to this point, it said, well. The topic of most energy is a community park. And what else do we want to, uh, to accomplish within, you know, what's? You know, what else is tied in the pros goal trip?
Yeah, I'm gonna find out.
Let me review the goal in January. What was that most? Unless it's changed, that you wanna do something in the next two months.
So I do obviously need to update with everything we just talked about today, update the community park plan, which I can do that, and then. I'll do that and PDF it and send it back to you, I don't think we really, the inventory of the. CCSD owned undeveloped properties, we kind of hit on that a little bit, um, we really don't have it, it's a. Um, an ad hoc committee.
Well, yeah, that's no longer an ad hoc, but so. Yeah, what's, you know, at what point is staff going to? You know, pull together some effort on that, because the way it reads in the board strategic plan is. Right, list the general manager, list they, list, you know, list fire department, list, you know, a bunch of entities, including the pros committee. How, how will that progress happen? Cause some of us have some.
Slow city has been doing this huge project where every, uh, grandfather lot that they have, you know. Just open space, they're reaching out to the local communities and doing community gardens and little playgrounds and. Like, they're doing a lot, and I know we can't do that on that level here, but I think that's kind of the goal of those lots, like, we. We don't even know every lot, but if there is a potential for a lot to become a community garden and the community around it would love that. Then that's something I would love to help facilitate, so.
Yeah, it's a good thought, um.
A bench.
Well, we do have early talks right now with the community garden. Left side of laughing, we just didn't wanna go into those areas until the SR four was completed. Which now we can feel confident that the SR four is completed, so, um, those talks are actually happening right now.
Yeah, I think for, for us, once we secured, so we're getting ready to sign the MOU for the forest health grant. The other CalFire grants coming through, that's gonna help the CCSD open purses. What we wanted to do is get that MOU signed and then meet with the project manager to try to, what, to really try to figure out what it's gonna look like to maintain all of our open lots. Um, the, the CCSD owns, and that maintenance, um, and figure out what he's gonna be doing. So that David and I can get a better grasp on what our outlook for the next two, three, four years is gonna be. Um, again, my only, my only concern is, is anything that's added in those lots needs to be maintained.
Right.
And David's always getting tugged, you know, whether it's the dog park, whether it's gonna be the skate park, whether it will be disc golf. Like, we're running out of staff, and so that would be my concern, it was like, how does it get maintained, how do we?
Also, the idea is more of an dock of, of park or a lot or whatever. So if the community likes the idea of a community garden in their area. In one of these lots, then the community takes on responsibility for weed whacking and growing or. You know, same thing with a bench, if it's a beautiful just spot to sit. Um, so the idea is to kind of get some volunteers to help manage some of these, and I, and I know we're talking probably just a handful, couple. Of lots, um, that's the, that's the general idea.
Yeah. And as a current, it's explained that green space is doing this with green space properties. Something similar, and so the model's there.
Yeah, so again, nothing super fleshed out, but as you guys look at these underdeveloped lots and open places and stuff. That's kind of what we're thinking, or, you know, we don't want ownership of every lot in town.
No, no, no.
Strategically, we can do something fun on a few of them. And get people to.
Isn't there some folks that already encroached on our lots already?
Yeah, I got three people that are well in thirty feet in our, our box.
I know one of them. So anyway, that's kind of the, we, and we don't really have to even update this right now, but if we have that on the radar, something next year that we can really. We can be looked at.
It's a question.
The whole list, and you'll check, you still have a list, right, of all the lots?
I mean, I know President Gray is passionate about giving these things away.
I was just gonna say, why haven't we ever just not considered giving them away?
Sell them to somebody for a dollar.
So we. Nobody wants them. That's why they sold them for a dollar, cause they didn't want them for a dollar. Right, and all these discussions, these were the original discussions, we'll take these lots and the neighbors will all take care of them. And it just didn't flush out like that when the.
Did we ever communicate with the neighbors?
Kind of, but nobody wants a lot with a fifteen thousand dollar liability on it that's gonna fall on another, you know, and that's. Where it was, people were getting rid of liability.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it'd be down.
No, it's actually the discussion with the concerns with the community garden that's on the table right now, that it's all about liability. And having anybody of the community on the lot, in other words, yeah, it's the biggest concern.
I also definitely bringing up an agenda review and, um, talk to Tom about it and put it on Tim's radar. See what, what that would take, you know, for us. I just get really worried, you know, it's just the lots are a headache. Just such a headache, you know, for the district and, and staff, you know, David like crushed it this year and did all seventy some of our lots. Which would have cost us thousands, he did it, and so it's the maintaining of it, and then I'm just a little cynical sometimes when it comes to like. When we add more stuff. It's, it's not always the community members that will take ownership of it. You know, in some aspects, I just feel like David's constantly getting tugged, you know, David gets called on the weekend, dog water's empty. You know.
I know.
You know, there's just a lot of things.
Phone calls and the emails, yeah, it's endless.
Well, let's, let's think creatively, like, you can sell a lot to someone for a dollar, and they can put a bench on it and maintain it, be responsible for it, that's. Like, I buy one, so, um, I, you know, the idea is to think creatively.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, absolutely, I just get a little, trying to be more.
Okay, so.
I have a question now, uh, to Michael's point on the strategic part of this strategic goal, the committee, what? What, what is the role of the committee, Matt, and who's gonna lead that committee? Yeah, I, I reframed the question, yeah, the, the CCSD, it's not, it's not a committee. Well, there's, yeah, there's Matt, there, well, like, there's that, there's Fire Safe Focus Group, there's Chief Berkey, there's David. It's listed as the committee for that.
I, I get, you're using the word committee.
Okay, but they said team.
It was like, that's who we, person's responsible, right?
On that list, Owen's moving it forward, that's the general manager, the general manager's name is there. And there are a number of names. So engaged with that, right? So, and so, you know, the general manager's responsibility to engage those individuals to achieve the objective of management plans for those open space parcels. And so there's. How is the general manager gonna do that is the question.
Yes, and.
And what is pros role, specifically mine?
Kind of goes back to the original thing, like, I wanna get with this, uh, project manager on the grant to see what, how they're gonna manage those lots. Primarily for fire risk, fire safety, weed abatement.
Yeah.
And how they're gonna move that forward, and then what I hear on the pros side is like, okay, now we wanna do something with the lots, not just make sure they're weed abated. So it's kind of like.
We didn't, we haven't identified when we started this whole thing.
Because I think from the strategic plan issue is more of the maintenance side, it wasn't really what we're gonna do with them. Is there things we can do with them, it was, how are we maintaining them, how are we making sure they're being debated, not a fire threat? Cause in that strategic goal doesn't necessarily talk to what you folks are talking about creatively, whether it's a golf lot or a creek.
Yeah.
Your gardens, I don't think that was really the intent, or at least my interpretation of it, was the intent of that strategic goal is, how are we gonna manage them? And from us, the management piece is fire threat.
Well, but that's, but, but you've got multi, take Fern Canyon for example, you've got. You've got Jim involved there because of the utilities. So there are multiple properties CCSD owns that have fire, utilities, F and R, and open space parks recreation. Issues or possibilities, cause that's the, that's the idea is, is that among those multi, uh, multi uses, multi. Um, stakeholder kind of things that we manage those properties in a holistic way. We're not just looking at it from a fire standpoint. So, you know, I, obviously Laura and, and Crosby care deeply about Fern Canyon, so. How do we get a, like a holistic strategic sort of development plan for Fern Canyon, Santa Rosa Creek? That, in my mind, that's, that's the idea, especially for the bigger sort of properties, let's just call them priority. Properties where we can take, you know, a, a, a multi stakeholder, multi-function. Look at them, and then got others where, you know, maybe, you know, little community park would make sense. And we could. Show that as a potential plan for that, others just rebate them, others, I don't know, sell them for a buck, whatever.
I mean, I think it'd be potentially something to bring up at the major update for the strategic plan is maybe get some clarification on that strategic goal. I don't, Mi- Michael, how did you interpret that goal?
Yeah, I, yeah, and so, so just question on, you know, you're just really asking, as. As the pros committee rep, what, uh, representative, what is, what is his responsibility and was the pros committee's responsibility? Well, right, from the big picture, right, um, Matt, uh, it, it, Matt, my is, is, uh. His general manager is accountable to the board of directors for executing this strategic plan, right? Strategic plan says develop management plan for CCSD owned undeveloped parcels, right? So he's accountable for that, and there's, uh, you know, five directors that collectively. Provide that direction, right, and we speak with one voice, right? But, um, yeah, who's involved, general manager, fire chief, F and R manager, uh, fire safe focus group and pros committee. Right, uh, each of those entities is gonna have an angle, uh, you, you're darn sure, fire chief and fire safety focus group. Primary focus is fuel reduction, um, you know, Mr. Gary's facilities and resources. Uh, is gonna be, you know, you know, clearly, how do we do this, minimize liability to the district, how do we do this economically? What does pros committee bring? Clearly, pros committee brings the open space. Um, kind of holistic perspective and parks and recreation, to what extent can we influence? The, these parcels to be used by the community in any way, and how do we ensure that sustainability, open space? So each of these entities is gonna bring something to that table, how's it gonna work? I don't know, we won't know till we get there, um, and, uh, the timeline on, on this is, you know, you know. For next year, so, um, we're gonna be seeing some progress, it's not, you know, Matt, uh. Uh, you know, the. You know, the, the sky's not falling on this, and so, so, but, you know.
I think like the grant itself is gonna be like, oh, we have a management plan now, you know, because we have someone who's gonna be out there, okay, this is what we're gonna do, starting this day, this day, this is how we'll manage the properties. I guess the piece that pros is pointing out is, once we, my feeling is like, I wanna get comfortable with those lots being maintained every single year. That creates such a liability for the district, because, you know, I'm gonna be taking a lot of heat here in a little bit when people start getting their bills for weed abatement. From Paradise Tree Service, which was really expensive, um, there's some big bills that are going out of the mail. So I wanna be able to stand and say CCSD has been rebating our lots, we're holding ourselves to the same standard, so I guess that's my primary concern is, once I get that grant. Rolling, and we feel comfortable on how that's gonna roll for the next few years, that we feel safe as a district, and our properties are being maintained, that we can start to look at. Adding something like pros would want, you know, is it feasible to do community parks or adopt a lot? Um, you know, the Fern Canyon piece, the, you know, when it comes to those, those preserves, again, the project manager, CalFire are gonna be working with. Green space and, and things that nature, to make sure we're not, you know, slashing and burning Fern Canyon. You know, so there's just lots left on the table, like, um, that we gotta meet with these grant managers to figure out, okay, well, how are you gonna do this? How's David gonna be a part of it? What, what, what does it look like? When does it start, when does it end, it's just a lot of unknowns, so I don't know if I can dip my toes into the open space community park. Or little pocket parks until we get more comfortable with what this grant looks like and how it's gonna be executed.
I gotta say, like, I, I view this one as a, a long track, well, you know, I, I know. Really always started this was just to identify, um, and so now we're moving on, you know, the next phase of that, which is good. Um, so maybe, I, I don't wanna see this off our goals thing, but I, I personally didn't think that we were gonna be moving on this one particularly fast.
Well, and I feel like we, we're at least part of it, you know, part of it is gonna be moving pretty quickly with, with this grant, which is huge for the district.
Just identifying, doing the weed abatement, like, I mean, a lot has happened with those lots.
Fern Canyon, I mean.
Yeah.
And in theory, fire and fuel breaks, you know, which are very expensive to have done each year. You know, the maintenance of the ranch with the forest health grant, I mean, that was gonna free up a lot of monies and staff time. In the general fund, specifically facilities and resources, which, um, will take some pressure off the district.
How big is the grant?
Well, seven million for the forest health grant, and everybody's kind of getting a little piece of that, um. Well, seven million for the forest health grant, and everybody's kind of getting a little piece of that, um, the. I think the uh Cal Fire Grant, it's not the, the road Cal Fire Grants, but the Forest Health Grants over here, and then there's another one for the CCSD, that's two hundred and sixty thousand. For our first year, I think, when, and talked to David Pearson, he believes that they can get some more. And turners, that's a lot, for, for our seventy, you know, ish, open spaces and Fern Canyon and things like that.
You, you have to do that. You pay me or you're doing that.
But I definitely, I definitely like to circle back around, once we get a grip on the fixes and how they'll be managed and take a look at like, the things that you're saying.
Okay.
I mean, even if prose wants to work on an idea of it, you know, and get that in the works, then when I figure out. The grant piece and how they're going to manage it, bring in the project manager.
I love the idea of this, and like, I love the idea, but I just see all the layers in front of us.
Well, there's giant, I totally get that, I'm not, not even possibly suggesting this is an easy thing to solve. And every lot has its own unique things, so, um.
I mean, I've turned down, they've been trying to give us some lots on the backend, blank insurgency, and I just say no, send it back, you know. So we just can't take on anymore.
Yeah, so my only point of brain, I mean, I'm just going through the goal report so that we put something in here, this one, you know. I really am not supposed to be the one who's updating each one of these goals, you know, it's supposed to be the DRIs that go in there and kind of update. Um, but I will, I'll put some language in there that kind of sums up what you were just saying, that, you know, this is definitely being something that's on our radar, but. It's going to be a, like, a long-term situation.
Hey, one thing I heard a moment ago was, was somewhere between an offer and a, and a plea for help, uh. You know, the, the concept of a framework for what an open space management plan might look like for. You know, any of these individual properties, what I heard was opening the door to, if. If, if you want to present some conceptual framework, you know, uh, that might be a, a good starting point.
Yeah, aren't there deed restrictions on some of these where you can't give them away, you can't sell them, or is there? I'd really have to do some looking, I know at some point we took fifty, fifty lots or fifty parcels that we just said, yeah, we'll take them. You know, this is what Tom was on the, um. But, but, but I don't know, we had to have the responsibility of maintain, of keeping them, in other words, I don't think you can sell them again, I think there's, uh.
Now, we're, whoever takes them over from this point has to stay within my conservation easement.
Yeah, like, like. There's different easements on each one of these lots, so they're not, it's not general across the board.
Correct, there's like four different types in each one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there's all sorts of different, uh.
That's why looking at each one of the lots.
Yeah.
But I never wanted a street light. Um, okay, then, I'm just going through the report still.
Go ahead.
All right.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, we have the relationship with the SLO County Parks and Rec, um, hasn't really been updated for a while, we are supposed to invite. Um, Pandora and the Nash Garner to this meeting, um.
And I've done so, and she's, you know, she's been, yeah. She can invited, yeah.
Okay, so we've invited.
Yep.
Um, and then have we gone to any meetings recently, Ellie, I haven't updated since July, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You went September?
Uh, yes, I went September and gave them an update on the state park and on the community park. And requested a full presentation slot on either the October meeting or the. Um, November meeting, where we can, you know, as part of the community engagement. But also as part of, you know, getting their council advice guidance. So I'm, I've reached out, I'm not, uh, Tanya Richardson, who, by the way, is, she's at meetings, she's the one, she's at those meetings. Tanya and Sean are the department representatives at the commission meetings, and so I've reached out to both of them to try to get on the agenda. For October, November, not heard back.
Perfect, how many people are at the meeting?
How many people?
Yeah, this last meeting.
You mean in the, in the audience, or at the, on the?
On the board.
On the board, uh, you know, last time Pandora was gone, um, I'd say. The major, yeah, the majority, there, everyone's in one missing one.
It's fine, right?
Uh, there's, I think that's right, five with, uh, I think it's her name's Renelle Baldwin, her chair. One, two, three, four, five, yeah, five, I think. So yeah, good attendance from the commissioners, yeah.
That's it, what about public?
Very few, I mean, only the people who are coming in really to present something, there's no public participation. It's the general public, yeah. Right.
I, I don't even.
Exactly, Tony and you too, right?
My question is to know what, what project are they working on even in, in an advisory capacity right now, like? Is there something on their plate that is?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, Sean went through the, through the list of prior, you know, they have their priority one, priority two, priority three projects, and there are a lot of them. And, uh, and so he went through all of those, and there's, there's quite a few, obviously priority one, and, I mean. We know they have no money, I mean, that's, that's given, and they talk, really, talk about that, but that doesn't prevent. Different organizations, like when I was there in September, Jack Ready, I don't know if you've heard of that, Jack Ready Imagination Park in Nippono. They're asking for six hundred thousand dollar matching fund in a phase two for just a playground, just to buy the equipment, the playground loan is two million. And so the equipment is one point two million, they're asking for matching funds from the department for just to buy the equipment.
Not even the installation.
I'm sorry?
Not even the installation, just the equipment.
Just the equipment, yeah, full construction, installation, everything's two million for the playground, so, um. Yeah, and this, they're, they're probably for Jack, they have phase one done, equestrian stuff, phase two, playground, phase three is a bunch of other stuff like that. Overall, it's like an eleven million dollar park, I think, when all is said and done, how much is, is being funded by the department, I'm not sure. What I know is that the department's already funded one point two million into the Jack Ready. Imagination Park, and then there was another Nippono presentation that was more grassroots from, looked like, I don't know, the city or something. And so that was very, uh, grassrootsy and not, you know, you tell. Say editorializing here, you tell just a little bit that the Jack Ready thing has a really good commission support. And department support, the relationships have been built over the years in phase one, the others, and like us, it's kind of like, hey, you know, great work, keep it up. And, and that's fine, I guess, we, I think, we, we have to be realistic enough to know that there's. I don't believe there's going to be any money coming to us or the community park from the department, they're way over. It, uh, committed and particularly their maintenance, their maintenance fund is absurdly underfunded, millions.
Yeah, I don't think I expected anything like that.
Yeah.
And then that's, I was reading about their whole initiative, pocket parks, little, little local community parks, so.
Yeah, you may, I, they didn't, they didn't go into detail on the priority one, Sean just went through those really, really. Quickly, but they have a lot between priority one, priority three, there's probably thirty different projects that are in queue. And I'm not sure we talked about, would it be worthwhile adding hours to the priority three? List, and it's, I mean, maybe it, we can talk about that another time, maybe if Pandora come on sometime, we could talk about the wisdom. You know.
The only thing I would love to see is that support and backing from them, so that when we go into the planning phase of this. It, you know, there's no, there's no issues because we have that support.
Yeah, I mean, they seem super supportive for both skate park and the, and the community park, so I think we just keep. Keep at it, and hopefully we get a, a place on the agenda that either this month's meeting or next month's to do. This presentation, so maybe you and I can talk about how to best represent in that presentation, who. Would be the best spokesperson and salesperson on that, uh, presentation to them. Well, that's the conversation you'll have, and that engagement discussion you have with, you know, with Pandora Nash, you know, that's. A, a discussion with Parks and Rec is on the engagement list, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, next thing on there is the rodeo grounds road, which I'm not going to take off, even though I know nothing will ever happen. Only because, um, I know it got graded, and David's done a bunch of amazing work cutting back trees and stuff so you can actually see. Um, we, we're going to kind of look in, in the future, look into the possibility of ceiling, so it's not so dusty, it does get ridiculously dusty. Um, and we were going to look at a cost estimate for paving, again, in the park feature. Um, and I'm keeping it on our list, I think, because as we go into the rainy season, we're always going to have grading issues. Um, and visibility from coming down Burton, and so I just think it's best, even if we don't really have any movement, we keep it on our radar.
Yeah.
So no updates there, and then almost the same thing with the connecting Fiskleyne, uh, west and east branch. Um, you know, looking either along under the bridge or putting up some signs. So that people can cross safely and warn the motorists that there's pedestrians crossing, which obviously didn't go very well.
I say we get Elon Musk to, to bore.
Yeah, yeah, we, we try, we were, tried to work with Caltrans to get some pedestrians crossing signs. It's not gone very well, so.
Even with that bridge, it's not even supposed to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was not supposed to be there.
The bridge that goes from east to.
The, the, under the bridge trail.
Well, the one that goes from the east branch to the side of the road. And that's, you have to get that ripped with Caltrans, we're going across a waterway.
Oh, yeah.
That's been the quiet subject.
We're not going to get anywhere, I mean, that, that's about the same as the rodeo grounds road, we're never going to get, we're not going to get anywhere soon.
But someday we'll get flashing lights.
Exactly, someday we'll get something, um, I don't want to say anything negative about how it's going to take some. But it's for my head. Um, again, keeping it on our list, even though it's really probably not going to go anywhere, so I think that really the, um, the. The park is our main focus, I think that's the general consensus, and we are moving forward on that slowly.
All right, well, then, uh, let's, that brings us, hey. Oh, right across the street, I believe the library closes at two today, don't they, but check out the library, if the doors are open. That's where to drop off the ballot, yeah, and, and if not, you know, all right, no worries, yeah.
Um, so again, I gotta, I guess I will update all of this and.
So each. Sorry, I, I, I've missed that, and I apologize to you on that, so.
Send me the fresh link.
Send me the link and I'll take responsibility for updating my stuff, okay, okay. But, you know, each, uh, the, the name indicated under directly responsible individual is accountable to, to Shannon to provide updates. And, um, you know, Jeff on his, Steve on Parks and Rec, me on rodeo grounds road, and. Oh, Shannon, you've got the, you've got linking trail, so that's, that's a protocol, so that brings us to future agenda items. And, um, just want to share, obviously, at our next meeting, we will have an engagement update, we'll have a lot more progress. At that point, we should probably be looking at the data if we have, right? And, uh, also coming, um, FYI, the standing committee terms expire. January of twenty twenty five, uh, by the, the bylaws, at the December board meeting, the board will direct staff, staff to. Uh, to advertise for all standing committees for applicants and.
Does that, I don't get what that means.
What does that mean, um? That means they put notice out there.
I know, but like, so standing committees different from ad hoc or?
So this is a standing committee.
This is a standing committee, okay.
Well, right, also, good, thanks for asking, yeah, the finance committee, uh, restoration infrastructure, the policy committee. And the Parks Recreation Open Space Committee, there are four standing committees.
Okay.
And, uh, the bylaws have those terms being two-year terms, that expire in January, uh, the new term begins in February. So, uh, so in December, right, the, the board will direct staff to put advertisements out there. Who wants to apply, um, and concurrently, um, at, you know, probably next meeting. Uh, I'll be asking, also, what members of this committee want to continue participation on this, uh, on this committee? Then that comes.
So some of you take over doing what I've been doing here?
Uh, and, but, you know, that, that's. So that's the mechanisms of how this works, yeah, and, and everyone knows cut, uh, the importance of continuity on something like this, that's long-term. Um, and just wanted to share the, the, you know, in terms of future gen items, that's, that's common.
Okay.
Um, uh, what else, anything else anyone wants to put on the, um, uh, future agendas?
We've got.
If I think of something, then I'm not going to say what it means. We sure have our, uh, you know, we have a full shopping cart, don't we? Yeah, full wheelbarrow, all right, um, with that, it is three forty-five P M. And this, uh, uh, this meeting of the pros committee is adjourned. Thank y'all, I'll stop the recording, uh, and, uh.